All right, welcome everyone to the public hearing, or I'm sorry, the workshop. Workshop on, this is Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. And we are going to have some CRA presentations from North Logan City and Malouf. We're allowing 15 minutes each on those. And then Amy Adams, our HR director, is going to talk to us about elected official salary adjustment and premium pay for employees from the ARPA funds. All right, we will go ahead and get started. And who would like to go first?
Do you need to turn your mics on?
Yeah, please turn your mics on, the council. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair. Sean Mill in Economic Development. I'm going to defer today's time to the consultants for each of the projects. Thank you for this opportunity. The agenda notes that Malouf or Nibley would be first, but we're still waiting on someone to join us. So with your okay, I'm going to invite Cody Dieter up with EFG Consulting. He's here on behalf of North Logan City to review their plan and their budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, council members. On behalf of the city of North Logan, we appreciate this opportunity to present the strategic plan that the city has put together, known as the Cash Innovation Community Reinvestment Project Area. So just a quick summary of the things I'd like to cover, really just three things today. First of all, the status of where this project is in process, the goals and objectives of their overall plan, and then the impact to the county. So first, let me start with the impacts to the county. And maybe a sidestep before we do that. The Malouf project is very specific and has a tenant that's already in place, whereas North Logan is looking to develop four specific areas in their community. So it's different, and it's not seeking one specific tenant. It is looking to revitalize specific areas within their community. So both approaches are very common in this industry, but this one is going to be different than what you see in Malouf. So currently, the county, or all the taxes collected in the area over the next 10 years, if nothing happens in this area, $378,000 would be collected in the proposed project area. And with the new value that will come on, from what we project will happen, $5 million will be collected of new tax revenue to the Community Reinvestment Agency. And 1.84 million of that would be given to the CRA from the county to make their plan go into place. So the remaining amount, 3.2 million, would go to the county as new revenue. And it's to be noted that the interlocal agreement specifies that any parcel can be triggered for no more than 10 years. And then the CRA has 15 years to trigger each individual parcel. So you'll never see any of these projects, project area parcels, in collecting increment for more than 10 years. So what's unique about North Logan's approach is they have just recently gone through an economic development plan, where they're looking at four specific areas within their community that they'd like to see very targeted approaches to economic development. So they've put that plan in place, and this project area plan and budget is intended to operationalize that and provide funding so that those very specific areas can see redevelopment, which is a unique approach and one that I applaud the community for. So these are the four areas. Closer to the airport, you have manufacturing and commercial. Then you have an area in North Main Street where you're going to see some open areas that we hope develop into commercial and retail. The city center, which is a unique area in the community, more focused on where a city hall will eventually go, and some unique development in that area with offices below or some retail below and living space above. And then South Main, you have some unique areas that need redevelopment, that are just old retail sites, one of which you've already seen redevelop, and that's where Cal Ranch currently is located, which has been a wonderful addition to the city. So this project area has four specific purposes in each of these areas. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Could you go back to that map and show me where Logan Manufacturing Open Space is, or was?
I will need help from Alan.
Where is? The Lorian?
Yeah, DeLorean.
2500 Main Northeast Corner?
So is it on?
Right West Corner.
It's on the corner of Main Street.
Or the strike.
So that's it, right there then, right?
Yeah, and this is kind of confusing because of the right door.
Yeah, that's what I'm confused on the map. Okay, that helps me, thank you.
Got it, okay. So these four specific purposes are different in each area. The focus, for example, in the manufacturing commercial is to create industrial jobs, high-paying jobs that add great wages to the community. And in order for that to come to pass, the tax increment use would be for infrastructure and to provide business incentives. The city center, again, mixed-use office and commercial, they again need infrastructure and incentives. Main Street South, looking for an anchor tenant in retail, which has occurred now with Cal Ranch. And so we'll still need additional money for infrastructure and rehabilitation. And then North Main Street, we're talking about improving access to commercial. You've got borrowed ditches in front, you've got things that kind of constrain growth, and so we're looking to have some infrastructure money there to assist businesses to enter the community. So the tax increment strategy is not blanketed, right? We're looking at targeting specific industries. And so this will be the matrix that governs the project area. Manufacturing is something that we really want to encourage, and so that would be the maximum amount of the incentive, up to 75% for up to 10 years. So that basically means an industrial client may come to the city and say, "We'd love to come into your community, what can you provide us?" Now they can say, "We can provide you, if you develop in this area, up to 10 years' worth of incentive, and up to 75% of your property taxes that you pay can come back to you in some form, either through direct incentives or through infrastructure." But it can't be more than that, it can't be longer than that. But it would be up to the city to then negotiate directly with those entities with those parameters in place. If it were someone coming in and saying, "Hey, we're retail, we'd love to get an incentive," they would pull this up and say, "Well, the most we could do is 25% for five years. Show us that you really need it." If a residential person came in and said, "Hey, we'd love some incentive," the city would simply say, "No, 0% for zero years. That's not something we're incentivizing, especially in this economy." So this gives the city flexibility, helps them to negotiate and encourage people to come and not have to go through this lengthy process of creating a CRA when someone comes to them, the grounds are already set when someone comes into the community.
Question on this in my mind, I think the city, through sales tax and whatnot, does much better on retail than they do industrial, don't they?
Yes, certainly from, if you're...
Why are we in a situation where you're going to give 75% incentives if you do manufacturing and industrial, which does not bring sales tax into your city?
It's a wonderful question. It's a...
Doesn't make sense to me, but I know you've got an answer.
It's a matter of broad economics. I mean, if you're just looking for a specific budget impact, you're right. Retail is, we should encourage retail all day. That's what's going to provide sales tax directly to the community. But from a broader perspective, do we want to incentivize, you know, a big box store to come in? Or would we like to see wealth come into our community and hope that it trickles throughout the community? And another reason is to encourage the school district to be a player in this project. They have no benefit from sales tax. They are benefited by income taxes that flow to the state and bounce back.
The schools benefit more than the city itself.
So it's a partnership. The city recognizes that they have a structure for revenue to flow to them. The county has one that's more similar to the city, and the city has a regime under which they receive revenue. And so it's a partnership with all the taxing entities. But again, it's a maximum, 75% for 10 years. It doesn't have, we don't have to do that, but that's the purpose. Yes, ma'am?
During this chart, let me ask, I know there was some parts that have existing.
Yes.
How does that factor into this? Are we extending them, or are they just on their own? Are we adding to them? What's that situation?
Yeah, good question. So I think what you're talking about is these crosshatched areas where it's green and purple, those are already in a current, either an RDA, a historic CRA, or something of that nature. And so those, by being in this new CRA, would be reset to their current value. So instead of being at the old baseline value where they were and in that old project area, they would be, in essence, pulled out and put into this new one at a higher base value.
I have a funny question to ask. Is the water bad on the west side of Main Street when you get that far north?
I'm going to defer that one to Alan.
The Lorian property's sat there forever, beautiful property, and then you just go a little further north. That property, along there, never sails. And I just wondered if the water's bad over there. Everything is always on the east side.
Mayor, Alan.
It's a good question. No, the water's fine. And one of the focus areas is that area and through that portion. As we expand into Main Street North, it's a lot more open, wide open. That's where we want to attract all that business to that area.
Plus you got the airport on that side. It just looks to me like that side should be the premium area and not the east side. But the east side just must be the inversion influence that has the east side with it.
We're starting to see a lot more pressure on that west side. We're working with current owners right now.
I say, there's nothing happened there as long as I can remember.
Yeah, two of the properties changed, and that has a lot to do with it.
Well, I'm asking a lot of questions. Go ahead.
That's good. It's a work session, that's the purpose of it. To summarize the budget, this is the operational budget. Tax increment, we expect to be 47 million over the life of the project area. And the revenue to the taxing entities would be, you know, 35 million would come back to each of the taxing entities, and that's the bottom number there in the total column. 5 million is the number for Cache County in property tax. And again, currently, you're receiving 378,000. That's what you'd receive over a 10-year period from all those properties. And again, this is the sources and uses of the project. So we anticipate 13 million, plus or minus, coming into the CRA, and that would be used primarily for infrastructure, 7 million of it for infrastructure, 3 and 1/2, a little more than 3 and 1/2, for incentives, and then 1.2 million for housing, which is a statutory requirement under the act. And then, as part of the agreement that the city has already entered into with the school district through an interlocal agreement, sales tax will be, some sales tax will be diverted to the school district. It'll be 5% for five years, sorry, 10% for five years of the sales tax that's generated in any of these projects, recognizing that their incentive is much different than the city's. And so it's a way to bridge a partnership with the school district. So that's the summary of the project. We're presenting that to you today. As I mentioned, the school district has already entered into the interlocal agreement. The city is waiting to, and the RDA is waiting to enter into its own interlocal with itself, with the city, and then assuming we put this in front of you and for your consideration. So happy to answer any questions that you might have, and Alan and the mayor here as well, if you have any questions.
So the county's just going through an outlook plan. Was that plan aware of any of these CRAs and what's going on? What about the transportation plan and all that as far as roads there? And has this been brought to any citizens in North Logan, or are they aware of what's going on there?
I can answer the last one, which is the project area plan and budget has been approved by the city, and so there was a public hearing that was held.
It's been vetted through the public.
Yeah, so they've gone through the process, it's been approved. The rest, Alan, you're going to have to help with that.
Sorry, council member, could you repeat the first two questions?
Well, the county's just going through a general plan, and part of that general plan is transportation. If you're talking about all of this along Main Street and everything else, that's going to do one of two things, bring a lot more cars on there or clog traffic out, or both. So is the county general plan aware of that? Does it even talk about what's going on with this? Has those two been communicated? And that's part of my question is transportation, and what are we looking at there?
That's a fact.
And if we're bringing in manufacturing, it would seem to me we're going to impact with much more heavy truck or whatever. So there has been discussion that, are any of those areas affected by roundabout? Because I've had truckers call me and tell me that a lot of the roundabouts are causing problems for transportation when they hit a roundabout or going through there, that trucks can't go through them?
We've tried to design them. Sorry, just answer each of the questions. Yes, we are working with the county. And recently, the Main Street Planning Project that they received funding for, the Main Street Planning Project, was extended to 2500 North because of that very question that you brought up. It doesn't stop at Logan, it doesn't stop at 14th North or 10th North. A lot of the transportation issues go all the way to 2500 North. So we pushed to have that plan go all the way to 2500 North to the DeLorean factory property. And along those same lines, so that master plan, as they started talking about that with the county and with UDOT, it doesn't just include Main Street or Highway 89 or 91, it expands to all the roads surrounding that. So 200 East, or what we call Wolfpack Way, we obviously worked with the county, that was installed about four or five years ago. That one does have some roundabouts on it. Those were designed primarily so that, with the UDOT standards, that we could have trucks go around them. Obviously, in a perfect world, that would work easily. I know they still have some issues getting around those, but those ones that we've designed in North Logan are wider, and the trucks do have the ability to get through those fairly easy, the way they're designed. The other question that you brought up about the other roads around there, 200 West, which is really hard to describe, but you can see a small 200 W on the top of that screen. 200 West is a regionally significant road identified by the county and UDOT on their 2050 plan. And that road will go all the way from Logan High to Smithfield in the future. So that's a regionally significant roadway through here, intended to handle industrial and all types of traffic. 400 West is very similar. That goes from the county fairgrounds all the way to Smithfield, which is kind of halfway or more towards the top of the screen there that you can see there. And that transportation corridor, both of these intended to alleviate Main Street. Again, these will be part of this study and part of, in conjunction with the county and UDOT and working through that, but that will be a major...
Did you say 400 West or 600 West?
400 West. 600 West is the railroad tracks. There is a small road in certain portions, but 200 West and 400 West would both be regionally significant roadways. 400 West would actually be where UDOT has identified where the traffic light would be located in the future, so...
200 West is my neighborhood. There's a lot of residential in there. How are they going to make the roads accessible for trucks and different things through there? Because those roads aren't very wide through there.
As they come through this portion, obviously, North Logan and Logan have swapped boundaries through this area. And at that time, I think there was just one home on the corner, and then a few homes in Logan along that road.
Looking further north?
Further north, it expands to more of an 80-foot right-of-way as it goes, and that's for the industrial traffic. As you get the businesses like Lazy One and Thermo Fisher, that's where it's expanded and it handles that more industrial traffic, and ties to 2500 North, which is that key terminus, I guess.
Thinking all of their plans and everything, the one thing that would help the alley out more than anything is to take 10th West and go, you know, continue straight north to Smithfield with it.
And that's what Jeff Gilbert's been working on. It's more along the lines of 16th West, because 10th West ends at the airport. 16th West wraps around the west side of the airport. It's intended to be that bypass road.
You've got the airport in there, so you're going to have to go around the airport somehow. But you need a road that will take you from South Logan all the way to Smithfield.
Yep. And those two roads, 200 West and 400 West, are the roads that can do that. And North Logan's been pushing that. We've been working hard to make sure...
It's still running all that traffic right through the middle of Logan. 200 West and 400 West, in my opinion, is still in the middle of Logan. I don't see you're going to accomplish anything doing that.
I don't think it'll provide solutions to everything. It's just an alleviation point.
If you get beltways, you go down Salt Lake and all those areas, those beltways are a long ways from the congested part of the thing.
And that would be the 16th West roadway.
Yeah.
I think that starts around Ted Service Station. That's where it heads west and heads west through the county. Oh, the intended path. They haven't finalized that. So sorry, that was a long answer to your question.
Now, the big one, is DeLorean ground appeasable or feasible to anybody, or are there still issues with that? What's sitting there?
There's no issue with the ground, because previous RDA monies 20 years ago were used to clean up the property. And then a property owner, a speculative property owner purchased the property, kind of as a holding property. They've said that they are not opposed to development on that property, but they're not actively seeking any development on the property. The properties north of that, though, have recently changed hands, and we've been working very heavily with them the past several months. Kind of a unique thing about North Logan, you guys might all know this, and sorry, I don't want to get off on a tangent, North Logan in the early 2000s was booming. And when I started with the city, because of that booming nature in North Logan, the city council and the other representatives basically had the notion that North Logan is the greatest place on earth, which it is, but we don't need to incentivize anything. The businesses will just come and flock to North Logan like they had been for the previous five or eight years. And what you notice is a lot of empty businesses over the next 10 years. The last four or five years, we've actively started that, incentivizing businesses, working very hard to fill those businesses. And so those 10 or 15 businesses that were empty are now all filled, and we're starting to work on the, kind of the vacant properties through there.
So just exactly with what happened to DeLorean, is there money set aside for encouraging manufacturing to come in, if there's any cleanup needed, or any issues down the road?
Yes, 100%. That's what a lot of these monies are used for, is to clean up the properties. It's happened on 200 East and on that property. Another key incentivizing factor is certain businesses, I'll just give you one, EP Systems. We haven't finalized this, obviously. We're still going through the process. Even the notion that we were looking into doing a CRA was a major factor in them receiving an extremely large grant from the state recently, was the fact that the city was supportive in looking into options to help them locate there. And that business will have 3,000 jobs, I believe, in the next few years, is what they're shooting for.
I know that area's had a couple artesian wells that have actually, you could have a few years ago bought water rights and transferred around from there, so hopefully there's protection for the groundwater and everything else that's being considered as we move into this.
Yes, there's a number of artesian wells. We worked with a few property owners. There was one near EP Systems that went in, that we worked with them on that. So a very good point.
Okay.
So just one quick question for clarification. You were saying that the fact that you are doing this project, lab EP Systems, to get some funding from the state?
It was one of the factors. Obviously, EP Systems is fantastic.
They're doing a lot of stuff, but this helped them?
Yes, we wrote a, they asked for our support, and we just said, "What are we doing to support them?" So we said, "We're working on a CRA. We don't have it in place right now, and we're hopeful that it could be in place." The school district was signing off at that time after four years. And we wrote that letter to the governor's office, and they were able to receive a very large, multimillion-dollar incentive package from the state.
So what would be important for us as we're looking at these type of things, to make sure we're aligned with what the state of Utah's doing, to help with the flow of these kind of resources?
Yeah, we want to align everyone's goals, the county's goals, school district, city's goals, and business, obviously.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you very much. Thank you, Cody.
So while Cody's disconnecting his laptop here, I'll invite Jason to come up next. And I know that everyone here in the room likely knows, but that was Alan Luze with North Logan City, city manager, and I want to acknowledge for those that can probably only see the back of the heads, for those in the front rows on the YouTube stream and for the audio recording that we also have, Mayor Lindsey Peterson here from North Logan. So our next presentation is for Nibley or the Malouf project area. Jason Burningham, I'll invite him up right now. He's with Louis Young Robertson and Burningham, and they are the consultants that are helping on this next project area. I also want to acknowledge that Mayor Larry Jacobson and Justin, Justin Mon with city manager, and Matt Hollyoke with Malouf. If you don't mind, I'm going to invite Matt to come up real quick. He has a prepared statement from Sam Malouf that Sam wanted to make sure was given to you guys, and then we'll turn the time over to Jason.
Thank you for your time. Again, this is from Sam Malouf. "When Casey and I founded Malouf in 2003, we had no idea what our small business would become. We invested in our employees, the communities we operate in and in Utah, as the business has boomed, and we can't imagine a future where that strategy changes. Malouf's corporate office has always been based in Cache County, Utah. First, it was a very crowded, small office in Logan that could reasonably fit 20 people. Then we moved to a slightly bigger office and crammed even more people in. Finally, we built our own office in Nibley that we thought was big enough to house more employees than we would ever have, 200 people. Are you seeing a theme yet? Currently, the headquarters is entering the third construction expansion project to add hundreds of additional seats to the building that we thought could never be too small. We've received support from Nibley City, the Cache County School District, and the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity to build an entirely new building and bring even more high-quality, high-paying jobs to Cache Valley. I want to thank our community partners that have helped Malouf companies grow into what we are today. I urge the county council to vote in favor of the Nibley City CRA project so that Malouf can continue to positively impact Cache County for decades more to come. Thank you."
Can you connect this? No, probably not. I'm not sure.
Stand by, please. While Jason's working on that, I'll just take this opportunity to acknowledge a lot of hard work. So as the council knows, I've been here in this newly created position for a year and a half, and both of these projects were well underway before I got here. Both of the cities have taken a very proactive approach, and as an economic development professional, I applaud them and their councils. That's just as true for their planning and zoning commissions. They've done a really good job on trying to be intentional, and as Councilman Borup asked, they're intentional in their growth and where they'd like to be and how they envision their local economies looking as they grow up. So hats off to the consultants. Jason and Cody are both great guys that are known for not quite a couple decades each, actually, and the cities are doing a really good job. So Jason, we're going to see if Matt's here will work. The fortunate thing is, Jason, the council has been provided all of the same documents that you sent to me, so they do have the ability to perhaps follow along by pulling that up on their laptops.
Well, thank you. I apologize. Sean and I tried to connect the past couple of days, and it's been kind of hard to get back together. I had planned to provide just a little bit of an overview in terms of the project, but I think Sean's probably given you a lot of probably initial information about the Community Reinvestment Agency and how the tax increment financing tools are used. So I thought I'd just spend a little bit of time, more specifically on the budget, the proposed budget. It has been a long time in coming. Malouf, as Sam and Matt and their team, has been pursuing an opportunity through the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. This is really interesting, because this particular project started when we were doing the Economic Strategic Plan a number of years ago. And one of the, obviously, one of the critical factors that was weighing heavily, I think, on the minds of, I think, elected officials, local leaders, and many others, was just the need for life-sustaining, family-sustaining jobs, and the ability to create an incentive to keep those who go to school here and love to be here, to allow them, afford them, an opportunity to be able to have a type of employment or job opportunity that would keep them here. So after that, Economic Strategic Plan was actually completed with the help of, obviously, the county is one of the primary vehicles in which that moved forward. These types of projects were one of many, but this was one of the particular projects These types of projects were one of many, but this was one of the particular projects that we identified and to allow Malouf the opportunity to expand here. So quite frankly, right after that, we started, you know, discussions with the governor's office of economic opportunity. Malouf was certainly in a position of need and wanted to stay and remain here in Cache County, and particularly at the site that they had picked in Nibley. That was a difficult economic decision because there are other locations, quite frankly, much more cost-effective for them outside of the state in terms of land costs and so forth. But their homes here, obviously, and their desire to remain here was critical. So the CRA in this particular case, the budget, was really created with the vision of promoting that opportunity here. The project size is, give or take, about 100-plus acres of land. You, I think if I get to the last part, hopefully I don't make you stir crazy or dizzy as I go through that, but I wanted to show the map. So there are two parcels or properties. The one area that you can see is really built around the Malouf current operations and would be an expansion for their headquarters and lifestyle components that would go in there as well. There is a north parcel that was part of this, it's up in the north end, that there's also property that's developable and has also been considered as part of this overall CRA. The primary functions of what is proposed to be put in here is public infrastructure, roadway improvements, expansion of water and sewer, and various other components that will, you know, expand this overall area. Malouf's expansion right now is considered to be about 100 to 120, $25 million of new taxable value that will be built. The anticipated timeframe is shortcoming. They're starting to get to that point where they just can't grow, as you heard Sam's letter. They can't grow anymore unless they accommodate that. So they're anxious to get started, but this is a critical component for that to happen. The north end, very quickly, just more of a mixed use. It does have a residential component. It also has some residential-commercial that's closer to the interstate or the highway, the freeway there. And it's more of a mixed-use project that kind of complements and adds to the overall area. The budget that has been adopted, and it was helpful to hear kind of some information that was provided on North Logan, so that you have the background of the process. Typically, what happens is the redevelopment agency, in this case, Nibley Redevelopment Agency, went through the process of creating a project area with the intent to establish a base-year value so that whatever currently exists, and Malouf has quite a bit of tax base already there, and so that would continue to flow through to each and every one of the taxing entities. So what would be proposed in this budget is a 75 percent, expand that a little bit so you can see it, a 75 percent, excuse me, 15-year for the county and some of the other taxing entities. And then the school district is actually participating at a 12-year, 75 percent participation level. And in order to accommodate some of the concerns and needs that the school district had mentioned, there also is a sharing agreement where Nibley is working with the school district to share in some other revenues to offset some of the impacts that might impact the school district. Overall, the budget is just over $13.8 million and would be, you know, spread that way, as you can see, based on the current tax rate. The county's is about estimated, over the 15-year time period, 2.4 million. Cache School District, even though it's shorter period of time, 75 percent, 12 years, the tax rate's considerably higher, so it would be 8.7 million. Nibley would be contributing 75 percent also for 15 years, which would be 2.5 million. In addition to that, there are also revenue sharing, some sales tax with the school district. And then the cemetery and the mosquito, and of course, the water district right now doesn't levy a tax. But those are the taxing entities that we anticipate participation. We've had multiple conversations with each of them. We also had some conversations very early on with the county executive, David Zook. As you know, coming from Nibley, this was a project that, you know, I say originates with the Economic Strategic Plan, of which David, and I know some of the council members were very, you know, involved in that. So we're at that point, at this point, to hope to have the council consider an inter-local agreement. We understand this is a work session, and this gives an opportunity for it to ask some questions and maybe be more informed. But our intent would be, I think the documents have been circulated, but the intent would be to go from this budget that has been approved and a plan that's been approved by Nibley Redevelopment Agency, and then enter into inter-local agreements with each of the partners, including Cache County Council. That's primarily what I've had. I'm happy to address any questions, if you have any relative to this project. I will say, this is one of those unique projects that are a little different because this is a very project-specific. This is very tailored to a company that's trying to build a headquarters and so forth. The prior project you heard was more of a place-setting, place-making, trying to put the right components in place to then encourage. And this is one where we're trying to keep the business and then grow it from that perspective. And so as we've had dialogue, that has been appreciated by a number of the taxing entities, saying that does fit well with their strategic initiative, which is, let's get jobs, let's get better jobs, let's keep them here, and let's see what we can do to accomplish that. So with that, I'll turn over and see if there's any questions.
Do you have any questions, anyone? Gina?
Oh, sorry. I've got allergies, and it's giving me laryngitis. What's the base year?
So the base year that's set here, just get to that, is the 2020 tax year, and it is $19,895,000. So it currently generates about $210,000, $220,000, depending on the tax rate. Tax rates kind of go up and down, but as of 2022, based on that tax rate, it's $219,000 that's generated. And of that portion, I believe it's $30,000 is Cache County. Again, the majority is the school district, but Cache County's about $30,000. What we anticipate is that this would grow, let me just focus on the base year we just mentioned, which was that 19-plus million dollars. When it's built, completely built, then we anticipate that it would jump. Here's a, I wish I could make that a little bigger without making it too illegible, but... So it's $30,000 now, just as we discussed, and at the complete build-out that we anticipate of Malouf's project, it's $234,000 for the county. So overall, we're going from just over $200,000 to 1. almost $6 million annually. Of course, a portion of that would be diverted so that it could be put into infrastructure and so forth, but that would be at the conclusion of the 15-year period. And then also, there'd be an additional 25 percent that would pass through beginning immediately, you know, on top of the $200,000. I hope that answered the question.
Any other questions?
Yeah. This is focused mainly on the Malouf, but there are a couple other businesses in that area. What's the effect, and are they aware, or how does that affect them?
Great question, yes. They're very aware, similar to, I think, the discussion on the previous project. The statute does have a pretty comprehensive public input process. So we've held, well, notices were provided, a number of notices were provided specifically to property owners as well as to residents in general. There was a public hearing held, and then ultimately, a plan and a budget adopted. Most property owners will not be impacted unless they choose to develop something, meaning if they're currently just in place as is, there's not a new tax rate that's provided here. It's just the tax rate that they've always, you know, had. One could argue that because of what Malouf is doing and all of the other improvement that's going to go in there, that their underlying property value might increase. It might be reappraised or assessed by the county at a higher level because of some of those improvements. We've anticipated that it wouldn't because the function of most of the public infrastructure, we think, is more just intended and geared towards supporting the Malouf expansion and then some of the things that are happening up north. But that is one possibility that, you know, them not even expanding, when the county goes in there and assesses the property, because now you have infrastructure and some of those other amenities, they could potentially reassess property and say, eh, it's a little more valuable because of those resources that are in. But we've explained that, we've had the discussions on that, and I guess I'm excited because there, really, it's a low basis of land costs right now, and there are, it is true, there is some development and some business and some activity, but most of those that we've talked with have been excited for the expansion and really kind of supportive of the idea of additional infrastructure and kind of raising their opportunity as well. Now, they, the way this is structured is they do have the opportunity to participate. They would have to come to the Nibley Redevelopment Agency and seek any type of participation if they desired to similarly expand or do something that, you know, would achieve the plan goals and the budget goals. And so that's outlined in our documents as well. So right now, what's really contemplated is Malouf. And then there's a north project that's kind of a master plan project, but the way the plan's set up is any property owner slash developer has the ability to come to the Redevelopment Agency to seek participation, but it would be only in accordance with what the plan allows and what the budget anticipates.
Any more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Again, we really appreciate this opportunity to come tonight and to speak about the specifics for both of these projects. Councilman Gunnell's question, and I know Jason's, you know, alluded to it, but it really has the opportunity in that particular project area to lower the development costs or readiment of pieces of property for these other landholders within the area. You know, if that's their eventual goal, it doesn't have to be tomorrow after the headquarters are built and it's occupied and, you know, they've had their grand opening, but in the foreseeable future, those additional public improvements will definitely help, not just make them more expensive on the liability side for the property owner, because they've now been reassessed higher, but actually make them far more marketable at a lower cost to them for development. So it's a really great question and an important nuance to draw out. Again, I want to give a lot of kudos to this whole team, and there are others that have been very helpful throughout this whole process. Again, these started before I've been here for the year and a half, but certainly have been at it the entire year and a half, and there's been a lot of good diligent work in the background. I'd be remiss if I didn't also give some kudos to the school district, because I think it's fair to say that at first, they were very reticent about these kind of projects, and that through the team effort, and it really did take a team, we were able to show them that they could continue to get 100 percent of zero, which is, you know, a fairly low number of what these properties are currently benefiting the schoolchildren and the education costs, or they could get a percentage of something. And it took some good brainstorming to be able to share some proceeds with them and see how this could be a real, true partnership between all the taxing entities. So without that, for maybe the benefit of our sponsors here, Attorney Luthy has the documentation for part of our internal process to review those interlocal agreements and advise and counsel, the county council. Likewise, council members, you have the documentation that I've been provided at this point and have heard it narrated today. So I stand ready at any time in, you know, the foreseeable future to answer any questions via email or phone call. Just feel free to reach out. And then with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to, you know, work with you and Executive Zook to make sure that we put this forth for a vote at some subsequent meeting. If you don't have any questions, I would presume that could be as soon as the next meeting schedule, which would be a couple of weeks out, or if there's some additional things to work through, then we can handle that and take care of that. Anything further?
No, thank you, Sean. We will definitely take a look at this and within, you know, probably the next couple weeks have it on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you to everyone for your presentation. Thanks for being here. All right, very good. All right, Amy, you're up.
Yeah, that one. Thank you. Hello, everyone. Am I ready to go? Okay. So in your last council meeting, I wasn't able to attend, and the question was brought up about elected official compensation, and I was asked to come back and bring the information that was presented last year so that you could have that discussion. So this should look like a little bit of deja vu. Nothing's really that new. With this presentation, if you remember last December, I let you know who was on the compensation committee, and we have four elected officials, including Executive Zook, Sheriff Jensen, Council Chair Barbara Tidwell, and Council Member Gordon Zillis. Our employee representatives are Tony Barrett as a chief deputy county executive, myself as director of human resources, and our citizen representative is Paul James. This is what was done for the council. I just wanted to point out that the council hadn't had an increase for over seven years, if you remember that. I'm sure you have all lived through that. That's nothing new. And it was proposed that an increase be given, and the proposal was that council members go have that raised, and their salary, annual salary be $16,000 annually, and then the chair be $20,000 plus a $100 a month vehicle stipend. So as we look at that in percentages, the council received a 28 percent increase, and the council chair received a 32 percent increase. This will look familiar to you as well. This is what our full-time elected officials comparison is looking like. The ones that don't have the red outlined around them are those that you approved for an increase at the beginning of 2022, and each of them received a 7 percent increase. So there's three of those. The assessor, the attorney, and the sheriff received an increase. Those that did not receive an increase were the recorder, the treasurer, the clerk auditor, and the executive. There in the middle, it says the recommended wage. That's recommended from the compensation committee. All of those numbers are a 7 percent increase, except for the executive that was recommended at $134,000 from the compensation committee, and that was due to comparisons with other like governments throughout the state. If you were looking at a 7 percent, I did put that figure up there for you, it would be at $129,018 annually. The wage effective there of January 2022 is what they are current, their current salaries are. You can see those, and then that increased percentage is what that percentage increase was. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but from my understanding, this is for your benefit to have a discussion for this evening. I will preface this with, I have a family commitment tonight and will not be able to attend the meeting, so if you have questions for me, speak now or forever hold your peace, because I won't even have cell access tonight, so...
I have a wedding.
I know, right?
Can you send us this?
Sure, I'd be happy to send it to you. No problem.
In our budget meeting, we talked about ARPA funds and stuff going. Do any of these participate, any of those ARPA funds that we talked about going to Cache County employees?
As far as the premium pay?
Yes.
That is a different discussion that I'll have in just a second. We'll move to that. This would not be considered any ARPA funds or premium. This would not be considered any ARPA funds or premium increase at this point. This is just the increase that was recommended by the compensation committee to be effective in January, and the council recommended that three of those full-time elected officials receive the increase and that the other four did not receive any type of increase.
So Amy, when the compensation committee met, what did, the amount that you earn in salaries, one component, right? And we're looking at our elected officials compared to other elected officials in different counties. The job descriptions are different in each county?
There's actually not official job descriptions for elected officials. I was told that elected officials don't really like job descriptions.
And also the amount of resources that each job could do. The compensation committee didn't look at that. They just took a, they just said basically, you know, in this case, say assessors and assessors and assessor, rather than this assessor does all the work themselves and maybe has one assistant versus another assessor could have 10 assistants. And we didn't look at that portion of what the job actually entails.
That is correct. So we did not look at that for any of the full-time elected officials. We compared what the average third-class county pays for that title of elected official in their county, and then also the average of what the second-class counties pay for that title in their county. And that is how we had that comparison. You can see those numbers there versus what cash is paying. And then if I remember correctly, Barbara and Gordon, if I misspeak, please correct me, but the conversation went along the lines from the compensation committee that the average increase for employees was going to be around 7%. And so the recommendation was 7% for full-time elected officials as well.
As you did that study, and we have a clerk slash auditor, did you compare clerks or auditors or wherever you go in the county, are they very close in pay?
We compared clerk slash auditor, so it's the same, so that we're comparing clerk auditors to clerk auditors.
There wasn't a lot of them.
I can say there can't be that many, right?
There was just a few, but we.
There are just a few, right? But that is what we, that is what we compare.
Some other counties are the clerk, if he's just a clerk, paid more or less, or what?
So in the other counties, when it's broke out as clerk and auditor, what I found was that they were generally, generally paid the same, whether they were doing the clerk, just the clerk functions or just the auditor functions. A lot of counties say, we pay all of our elected officials the same amount no matter what they do. So that's one approach that they do.
Years and years ago, when we combined clerk and auditor's office, we did give the clerk a bump because she was taking on the auditor side of it. Now, as we go through it, there's a few more of them that have combined, and as a result, there's a little bit to compare with. And so we tried, we didn't try to be the highest and we didn't try to be the lowest. In the compensation committee, we usually try to hit the mean in the middle. You know, we try to be fair and try to assess it about where it would, not the highest, but not the lowest.
And did the compensation, we can't look at job descriptions for other counties as you've told us, but did we look at the jobs within the county? Because the job maybe isn't the same as it was a year or two ago, especially if we've provided significantly more resources, more people, more staff. So the demands of the job have actually reduced over time that would kind of ameliorate the need for increased compensation. Do we look at anything?
We don't do any type of analysis like that, no.
Do we know, this might be them question, but how many officials have a car provided or a vehicle?
So the sheriff has one, the executive, and that is all. The assessor has access to one, the attorney has access to one, but I believe they don't drive those home. They're left here as a fleet vehicle. Correct, John?
So is that comparable to the other counties, same way?
Yes.
Sheriff and executive are however, same way?
Yes. Some of the other full-time elected officials in other counties either receive a vehicle stipend or they are provided with a vehicle to drive.
Do we provide a vehicle for the executive assistant? I can't remember.
The chief deputy executive?
Yeah.
No, he has not been assigned a vehicle, although there is a fleet vehicle available if he needs to use it to go to out-of-town meetings or if he's traveling excessively to inner-county meetings, so.
Do we have an overnight policy for those fleet vehicles? Are they, do they need to be parked overnight at the county, or can they be taken home?
So those that are taking them home, part of that, and Cameron may be able to speak to this a little bit more. I don't know if I.
Sorry, I was, uh.
I'll keep going, you correct me if I'm wrong. How about that? Okay, now that I have your attention.
Cameron, you don't check in until he hears his name.
I know, right? Yeah, yeah. There we are. So if they are driving those vehicles home, then they, there is a certain amount that's on their check that's taxed, and so they are paying taxes for that-ish. He's like, no, that's not right, Amy.
I mean, I understand the sheriff in that driving the cars home and stuff, because that puts the presence of the police further, but I just wondered to know how that parallels and goes on within other parts of the county.
So to my knowledge, the fleet vehicles could be taken home, like, so if I was going to go to a meeting in Salt Lake tomorrow, say, I could take a fleet vehicle home tonight and then just leave from home and go to the conference tomorrow in Salt Lake, rather than driving into work and then going to the conference from there. That would not be taxed, but people who have a vehicle assigned to them and are commuting with those vehicles, that the value of that commute is being taxed.
Do we have anything built into our policy on how many times I can, or an employee can take a fleet vehicle home before it turns into an assigned vehicle?
Not to my knowledge.
No. I will tell you that if I need to go to a conference, like, that's where I was last meeting, I just worked it out with Janine. She has a calendar. We say, I need this fleet vehicle. My conference was in the thriving metropolis of Vernal, and so it was a long drive, but I did pick that vehicle up the night before so I could leave early in the morning to get there and then return it that, you know, the day that I came back into the valley, so.
All right, any more questions?
We have just a common sense policy of whatever works.
Yeah, I don't know that anyone's checking it out for months on end, Paul, if that is kind of where you're headed, unless that vehicle is assigned to them.
Very good. Any other questions on this topic for Amy? Like she said, she's not going to be here, so if you have them now, let's ask.
I think I can probably email this to myself and then forward it to you from this computer, so I'll try to do that so you have that for this evening's meeting.
Awesome. All right. Thank you, Amy.
Okay.
Next topic.
Yeah. Okay, so I was also asked to talk about the premium pay proposal that was discussed in our budget committee meeting. From the final rule that was issued by the U.S. Treasury regarding premium pay, it does say that ARPA funds may be used to provide premium pay for eligible workers performing essential work. So how that is defined is eligible workers include workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors. And the list that's published by the Treasury includes, and it's quoted, state, local, or tribal, tribal government workforce. So we're covered under eligible workers, we meet that criteria. And then essential work means regular in-person interactions with the public or coworkers of the individual that is performing the work. And so all of the duties that are being performed by county employees would be considered essential work as well. So we're meeting the criteria for that. So the proposed amounts, and this could be distributed on August 12th if it is passed tonight in our budget amendment. The criteria that's been put forth would be that they would, the employees would be currently employed with Cache County as of August 12th, 2022. Full-time employees is being recommended a $2,500 premium bonus, or premium pay, I guess, not a bonus. I misspoke there. And then part-time employees, we would be prorating the hours that they've worked from August 1st, 2021, through July 30th of this year at $1.20 per hour to figure out the amount that they would get. Now, the $1.20 an hour is basically the $2,500 divided by 2,080 hours, which is how many hours a full-time employee would work annually. And so for it to be equitable for our part-time employees, they would be paid based on how many hours they worked during that year. The cost for this is approximately $900,000.
Is employee included elected officials, or is it just hired?
Well, let's look. An eligible worker would include workers needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential, critical infrastructure sectors, including state, local, or government workforce. I would agree that yes, that would include our elected officials as we would need them to continue to maintain the continuity of operations.
Can we pull them out? All of them?
Possibly. John, do you see a problem with that?
I don't think that you're required to give premium pay to anyone.
To everyone.
I think for, for non-elected employees, we would need to treat everybody the same. And.
Do we know how many people?
Your elected official employees differently? Haven't thought about that.
Think about that.
I'm going to, I'm going to take that. Not give an answer.
Do we?
They're all employees, so if you've got to treat all your employees the same, you'd have to treat them all the same. Is there a basis to treat elected employees differently? I'd have to think.
But it's seen as a bonus, it's not seen as salary, right? So we have a public hearing for salary for the elected.
This is, yeah, it's premium pay. It's not added to their base. It's premium pay.
But along Paul's point, if we're just talking about a 7% raise for certain people, I mean, what did the other workers in the county get as far as a raise percentage-wise? I guess they've, then my other question is, is do we know how many people, I mean, if you're, if you get this premium pay as of August 12th, those who are employed, do we know how many have been employed for three months or less?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, no.
It's a super kiss.
I guess I don't understand why we're paying up to July 30th.
It made it as, we had to have some type of way to have a marker to be able to calculate for the employees, and that was the end of a pay period. And that also allows us, allows the finance department, the payroll time, to make those calculations, because we will be calculating on those hours worked for the last 12 months and be able to make those calculations and determinations before that is funded.
As you were in the metropolis of Vernal last week, was this talked about by any other counties that are doing this, or do you have any idea?
We talked about a lot of other things, but not premium pay. Box Elder County was the one that, that I am aware of that has done premium pay, and they did give $2,500 to their full times, $1,250 to their part times. And then if you were working less than so many hours, it was $500. So it has been done at least by one other county that I'm familiar with. I haven't been able to check with the other counties on that.
And are you aware if they gave money to elected officials on this?
I'm not sure on that, but I could double-check on that, Barbara.
Right. It's nice that they broke it into classes, anyway, employees. Well, I'm going to take two seconds to make fun of ARPA, because I have to every single time, right? I mean, one of the guys that I've studied for years and years and years, Thomas Sowell, said, "Today's problems are often a result of yesterday's solutions." Damn, I hate ARPA. I hate all this money. It is a problem. It's a pox on our community, and inflation is always and everywhere a monetary problem. There we go. There's no solution.
The challenge that I see with this ARPA money and that it's here, but it'll be gone, but the anticipation and the expectation of those that received it will continue. That's the thing I'm concerned about. We all got a really nice email in the winter that we had, we were able to do a very nice thing for the people that got victimized up there in Sardine Canyon. We fed them, we fed them dinner, which is a, you know, wonderful thing. But when that money's not there, that won't be available. And that's, that's kind of what Paul's saying.
That, and as problematic as it is across the board, in every instance, I would lean toward this much more than trying to go out and use that money to build new infrastructure. I'm fine to use it to reinforce what we currently have done because we've got capital improvements we need to do, we've got roads we need to improve, we've got all those types of things for our, the current government that we have. I would hate to use any of this money to expand what we do today that will dig us a hole tomorrow.
We have to support.
That we would have to have ongoing support. This at least would be a one-time pay. We wouldn't have ongoing support, other than, to your point, Gordon, we'd need to be very clear in communicating where this money's coming from, so there's a future expectation. But rather than going out and building, you know, a cool, new something that's going to cost us X number of dollars a year ongoing for the rest of time, you know, all we do is dig us, ourselves a deeper hole if we build new infrastructure, rather than at least doing one-time money payments and then, and then retiring some of the current issues we already have on the books. If we use this to expand the scope of government, we've basically woven the rope that's going to hang us.
I think it's important to, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, the worst is if we use the money to hire new people that in two years will continue to be paid, need to be paid. That's when it starts to get really hurtful, because then we got a, we got a tax to pay.
Well, that was my question in the budget meeting. Okay, here's $900,000. What could it else be used for that may meet what the criteria is that you're saying?
Can I add to that? I don't know how the councils felt about this. I don't know that we've discussed it, but I've been concerned about some of our nonprofits, you know, and what's, with what's going on in the economy, what they're going to need in the future. I'm thinking of the Food Bank, I'm thinking of CAPSA, I'm thinking of, I don't know, maybe the Humanitarian Center. Wouldn't it be wise to have some sort of a program where we could give them the $900,000? They could apply for it, like maybe we do RAPS. So we could fill that need and reimburse their coffers for what they put out during COVID, because I think we're going to be seeing the economy turn down and people are going to be needing extra help, and those nonprofits are going to need extra help. So that's something to ponder as well.
If I may add to that, it was talked about in the budget committee meeting, and I did bring this up, that during COVID, the county continued to operate, and that was due to our employees that still came to work, that still came to work in fear of the virus, that still had contact with the public, even though that plexiglass was in front of them. They still came to work, they still did their jobs, they still were in the jail, they still were helping victims. They were still plowing our roads when those of us that were able to stay home or could stay home. So one of the things that the county has, that's one of its best and biggest assets, is our employees. And by doing this, this does let them know that they are appreciated, it helps them to understand that they are an important asset to the county and that we are hoping that they stay with the county. This is a good help with that retention effort to let them know that they're valued. So please keep that in mind as you have your discussion.
I think that's an excellent comment.
I do too.
I think that's an excellent comment. And we did have, we did have our county employees out meeting with the public all time, all the time during this pandemic, and they were exposed to it. They, of course, ended up with it, they went home, gave it to their families, the way we all did that. Even, even the Fauci guy that wore three masks and did everything he possibly could, he eventually got it. So no one was immune to it, but the people that actually was out, as Amy said, here every day, man in their offices. I mean, I had a son that went about two years and never even went into work. He could do all of his accounting and that at home. He had a hard time going back to work, but.
It's pretty tough, right?
Yeah.
I hate going to work.
Amy, this is across the board. This doesn't take out who stayed, who was able to stay home and work from home. This is just across the board, and so the percentage too will be different based on pay. So somebody that makes closer to $100,000 a year, this is going to be a smaller percentage of their salary compared to someone.
Yeah, it's, it's not a percentage, it's just premium pay, flat rate of 2,500 for a full-time employee, and then we would take the hours that a part-time employee worked times them by $1.20. take the hours that a part-time employee worked times then by $1.20, and that would be the amount that that part-time employee would receive. So we're treating all employees equally from this timeframe. All of our employees were working. There was not anyone at home. We called them all back in, in March of 2021, which most of them were back by then anyway. We just had a handful that were still working from home due to the fear of the virus, so.
I actually like the feel of that better than some of the other things we're doing.
I do too. Okay.
Could I add a quick comment?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to remind everyone, just because we haven't covered it specifically, that this would come, I think the thought is that would come out of the restricted side of ARPA, not the other unrestricted.
Cameron's saying yes.
Yeah.
This would come out of the.
Heard that with him before I came up.
This would come out of the restricted side and not the.
Which we haven't, we haven't come up with proposals yet enough to even cover that amount.
Yeah.
That's just a, something to keep in mind.
Thank you. Right. Any more questions for Amy on this topic? Thank you, Amy.
This is in the budget amendment that you'll be visiting about tonight, and so you will see on one of the lines, the $900,000, and that's what this is all about.
That's what you're estimating with the full-time and part-time would be an estimation of about $900,000?
Correct.
Do you see it being going, going above that?
Cameron, do you see it going above this, the $900,000?
I, I took an estimate based on a roster a few months ago. This is rounded pretty high for potential.
So it could even be lower?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Very good. Appreciate you.
Oh, you've been discussing. I haven't had a chance to think and do a little reading.
Okay.
I, I think that, so the analysis on whether to treat some employees differently, specifically elected officials, that would be treating some people differently, so you'd do an equal protection analysis, which says if, if you're discriminating based on protected class status, race, religion, gender, that sort of thing, then it's strict scrutiny. If it, there's also intermediate scrutiny, but low, there's just rational basis scrutiny. You can treat people differently if it's not based on those reasons, if you can articulate a rational basis, a good governmental reason to do it. You can't just do it arbitrarily, so that.
So I just need to come up with good government reason.
I can't hear.
Good government reason, that's all I need to come up with.
For a rational basis.
Rational.
So just for me, interpretation, so the elected officials are included in this or no?
It sounds like they're included in the proposal.
Who included them? Okay. Very good. All right. And if there's nothing else to be added or said, this workshop is adjourned and we'll meet again at 5:00.